Good evening and welcome. City Council is now in session. Please stand for the invocation by Councilmember Butler Barlow, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance to the Flag.
Let us pray. A poem by Amanda Gorman before us. "We lift our gazes not to what stands between us, but what stands before us. We close the divide because we know to put our future first, we must first put our differences aside." Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
The Freedom of Information Act certification is required at this time. Madam Clerk, will you please present the resolution for consideration?
A resolution certifying the closed meeting of November 5th, 2025 pursuant to Virginia Code, Section 2.2-3712. The Code of Virginia as amended is presented for council's consideration at this time. Now therefore be it resolved that the City Council, the City of Suffolk hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, only public business matters lawfully exempted from the open meeting requirements of Virginia law, and only such public business matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered by the City Council, the City of Suffolk, in the closed meeting.
Council motion is in order. What's your pleasure? Councilmember Williams.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval from Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Bennett. Second from Councilmember Bennett. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk kindly record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We'll now move to approval of the minutes from the June 18th, 2025 work session and the July 2nd, 2025 work session and regular meeting. And a motion would be in order. Councilmember Rector.
Move to approve.
Motion for approval, Councilmember Rector, Councilmember Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we have no special presentations this evening. At this time, we will consider the removal of items from the consent agenda and adoption of the entire agenda as presented. Removal of any item from the consent agenda would only be necessary if any member of City Council wishes to vote on a specific item separately, and a motion would be required. Questions and requests for information on specific agenda items can be addressed during the consideration of the consent agenda after the agenda speakers. If any member of Council wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda to be voted on separately, a motion would be appropriate at this time. Hearing none, a motion to adopt the agenda as presented would be appropriate at this time. What is the pleasure of council? Councilmember Johnson.
Move to accept the consent agenda as presented. Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented.
We get a motion for approval from Councilmember Johnson. Councilmember Butler Barlow.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Butler Barlow. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Madam Clerk, do we have any agenda speakers this evening?
No, Mayor Doomey.
Hearing no speakers, please present the consent agenda items for consideration.
Consent agenda item number seven, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the OBC Healthcare Foundation for the Suffolk Public Library. Consent agenda item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program for repaving sections of Holland Road. Consent agenda item number nine, an ordinance to accept and appropriate funds from the Federal Aviation Administration and the Virginia Department of Aviation for the Master Plan Update Project at the Suffolk Executive Airport. Consent agenda item number 10, an ordinance to reappropriate unspent fiscal year 2024-2025 funds to the fiscal year 2025-2026 School Operating Fund and the fiscal year 2025-2026 General Fund for Suffolk Public Schools. Consent agenda item number 11, an ordinance to accept and appropriate program income resulting from the repayment of certain loans associated with the City of Suffolk Emergency Home Repair Program. Consent agenda item number 12, an ordinance to accept and appropriate program income resulting from the repayment of certain loans associated with the City of Suffolk Home Rehabilitation Program. And consent agenda item number 13, an ordinance to accept and appropriate additional funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Program for the completion of the Holland Road Improvements Project.
Mr. Manager, will you please provide an overview of the items?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, walking you through the consent agenda items. Number seven, the city has received $1,911,258 in additional revenue sharing funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation for the Pitchkettle Road realignment improvement project. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the planned revenues and expenditures of the capital fund budget by $1,911,258 and does not require additional local funds. This project is due to start construction this December and last approximately 18 months. Item number eight, an ordinance to accept and appropriate $1,719,266 from the Virginia Department of Transportation State of Good Repair Program to be used for the repaving of four segments along Holland Road. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the planned revenues and expenditures of the fiscal year 2526 capital fund's budget by $1,719,266. This repaving section stretch will run from Loomis Road to the Village of Holland bypass. Item number nine, city has received $370,500 in funding from the FAA and $14,000 in funding from the Virginia Department of Aviation in support of the Suffolk Executive Airport. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the planned revenues and expenditures of the capital fund budget by $384,500 and requires $3,900 in local fund support, which is provided in the fiscal year 2526 aviation fund budget. Item number 10 is an ordinance to reappropriate $1,750,252.43 in unspent school operating funds in fiscal year 2425 to the fiscal year 2526 School Operating Fund and to the fiscal year 2526 General Fund. Suffolk Public Schools has requested the city reappropriate the funds in the amount of $1,750,252.43 to the fiscal year 2526 School Operating Fund and the fiscal year 2526 General Fund for the purchase of eight buses, four fleet trucks, and the repair of sinkholes to their school sites. Item number 11 is an ordinance to accept and appropriate $18,191.96 in the Community Development Block Grant Program, CDBG, funds repaid to the City of Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Adoption of funds will increase the planned revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grant fund budget by $18,191.96 and does not require local fund support. Item 12 is an ordinance to accept and appropriate $6,700 in Suffolk Home Investment Partnership Program funds, repaid to the City of Suffolk by Isla White County. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the planned revenues and expenditures of the consolidated grants fund by $6,700 and does not require a local match. Item 13, the city has received $1,903,367 in additional funds from the Virginia Department of Transportation Smart Scale Program for the completion of Holland Road Improvement Project. Adoption of the ordinance will increase the planned revenues and expenditures of the fiscal year 2526 capital fund budget by $1,903,367 and does not require any additional local fund support. We are currently tracking for a project completion at the end of December 2025, potentially the very beginning of 2026, depending on some final punch list completion items.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Manager. If there are no questions about the items, a motion would be in order to approve the consent agenda as presented. What is your pleasure? Councilmember Bennett.
Move for approval.
Motion for approval, Councilman Bennett. Vice Mayor Ward.
Second.
Second from Vice Mayor Ward. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no public hearings this evening. We do have one ordinance, which is an ordinance amending Chapter 70, solid waste of the Code of the City of Suffolk by the modification of Article 1, Article 2, and Article 3. Mr. Manager, please provide an overview.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Greg Benton, Director of Public Works, will present this item. I note that the modifications include operational updates and recommendations by the Downtown Advisory Committee. Good evening, Greg.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, and Mr. Manager. The purpose is to amend Chapter 70, solid waste of the city code, to clarify authority, collection standards, and container regulations. Recommendation is to approve the attached ordinance amending Chapter 70 by modifying Article 1, 2, and 3. Article 1 authorizes the city manager designated to create, modify, and revoke regulations necessary for effective enforcement, adjust collection schedules for special events and holidays, and ensures regulations remain consistent within the chapter. Article 2, a civil penalty for violations outlined in Chapter 70 will be applied according to the schedule of offenses. Article 3, related to trade rubbish, businesses outside the downtown influence area must self-manage trade waste. Downtown influence area exemption, up to three city-issue containers collected two times per week. Tree trimmings and bulk waste, their bundles have to be less than six feet and weigh less than 75 pounds. Up to 12 cubic yards of waste, again, the pile six by six by nine foot collected per property. Bulk refuse fees apply for anything that is 12 to 24 cubic yards. And large debris such as concrete, bricks, shingles, basically house-type debris will not be collected. Container requirements, automated collection areas, max three city-issued automated refuse containers per residence. And the placement rules, set outside after 5:00 p.m. and have to be in before midnight the following day. Downtown influence area, properties must store containers behind the front plane or screened from view. And the violations, as we mentioned before, after a written notice, it would follow the fee schedule inside this ordinance. Defective improper containers must be replaced, and they can do so by contacting the city. Depending on any questions, that concludes my presentation.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Benton. Council, questions, comments, or a motion? Councilmember Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm going to make a motion to approve the ordinance and just want to thank the Downtown Advisory Committee. They spent an awful, awful lot of time working on this thing over many months. And, you know, I never thought that trashcans could be as complicated as chickens, but it took a long time to come to this, and it's been a long time since this ordinance has been updated. And it obviously needs to be updated to reflect the current policies of the Public Works Department. So like I said, with that, I'll make a motion to approve.
Can we get a motion for approval from Councilman Rector? Councilmember Bennett.
I have a comment. Just for a second, if you don't mind. On the time of taking them back in, how is that going to be enforced?
So our refuse trucks are out daily, and if that is seen by any of our staff, that is where we would apply a written notice?
So you'll give written notices?
Right, the first time would be a written notice.
First time, second time?
Second time is where we would use our enforcement of fees.
Third time?
Again, we would do that again.
Because the reason I ask that, because somebody might be on vacation or something like that and might not have someone to sit the cans back in. So that's really why I sort of asked the question of how it would go be enforced. Okay, thank you.
Council, we have a motion on the floor for approval. Do we have a second? Councilmember Williams.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We got a second from Councilmember Williams. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
We have no resolutions this evening. We do have one staff report, which is a significant land use application. Mr. Manager, will you please provide an overview?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, Mr. Kevin Wine, Director of Planning and Community Development, will present two applications that we currently have in processing for rezoning requests. They both include applications that have more than 100 residential units.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council, there are two rezoning applications I'm going to walk you through this evening as significant land use items. The first being the Prudential Lake Prince development. This is a development located there on, at the corner of Lake Prince and Prudential Boulevard. It is currently zoned RE, that's our rural estate zoning district, and they're looking to rezone the front portion of this property to RM Residential, I'm sorry, B2 along that front edge on Prudential Boulevard, and then the balance of the property to RM, that's our residential medium zoning district. The property is located within the growth area, and it is designated as traditional neighborhood. The property itself consists of 80 acres, two separate parcels, both are zoned RE currently. 66 acres at the rear of the site and along Lake Prince would be rezoned to RM, and then the front portion of the site, 13 and a half acres, would be B2, general commercial. Ultimately, they, the RM zoning district allows for up to 4.4 dwelling units per acre. Here you have the division of the zoning districts as proposed. You have that beige, tan-looking color that is your residential portion of the project. The red at the front would be your B2. The developer in this case is looking to construct 147 single-family dwelling units. This would result in a density of 2.8 units per acre. And as it relates to the commercial, that would be along Prudential Boulevard. At this point, there's no specific proposed use associated with this application. However, the applicant has voluntarily proffered that certain high intensity and impact uses would not be permitted. Here's the conceptual layout that has been provided in support of the application. This conceptual layout has not been proffered by the applicant, but does a good job of helping you visualize what the 147 units on this site would ultimately look like. There have been a handful of proffers submitted in support of this application, one being that it would limit the development to 147 single-family units. There has been a proffer to make a cash contribution to the school system. However, it's significantly lower than our adequate public facilities requirements outlined in 31601 of the UDO would allow, or kind of dictates would be required in the event of a cash contribution to advance capacity. Ultimately, they are proffering a cash contribution of $1,000 per home constructed on the site, resulting in $147,000 towards the school system. Like I said, that's significantly lower than the number of students that the UDO states would be generated by this development. Secondly, a proffer I wanted to walk you through is, as it relates to traffic, ultimately turn lanes along Lake Prince, both left and right turn lanes, would be required at both entrances off of that road due to the classification of it being a major collector, as well as the speed limit, which is 45 miles per hour. At this time, the developer is only proffering that they would construct one right-hand turn lane at the main entrance. This application is scheduled for planning commission later this month, November 18th. That makes your public hearing tentatively scheduled for December 17th. The second item I will walk you through is called Lakeside Reserve. This is located along Murphy's Mill Road. It is also designated traditional neighborhood within the comprehensive plan. Presently, it is zoned rural estate as well. It's a 30-acre site. The existing zoning, that rural estate zoning, does allow for one residential unit per three acres of area. As proposed, the requested zoning of the property would be RU, residential urban, which allows for 10.9 units per acre. The developer in this case is proposing a residential development that would consist of 134 units. Total, that consists of 46 townhomes and 78 single-family detached units. These would not be in a fee simple form of ownership, meaning that it would be condoed. Here you have that rezoning exhibit that shows you the property there, south of Murphy's This is a conditional rezoning as well, so there is a proffer statement as submitted by the applicant in support of their application. Ultimately, they have limited the development to 134 total units. They have also proffered the conceptual layout that I will show you here in another slide. They have proffered advancement of school cool capacity at both the Elephants Fork Elementary School and Kings Fork High School, making that total cash contribution $1.78 million. They have provided some architectural elevations in which they are proffering compliance towards, and some road improvements as outlined in their TIA. This is the conceptual layout that they have submitted in support of the application. And here are a variety of architectural elevations that they have also proffered. So originally, this item was scheduled for public hearing before the planning commission at their November 18th meeting. We did receive a request for deferral from the applicant last month, or I'm sorry, last week. Ultimately, the public hearing will then be scheduled for their December meeting. That pushes back your consideration of this item tentatively to your January meeting. With both of these applications, you can visit our website, and there, clicking the public hearings tab, you can find a variety of information and support of these applications provided by the applicant. That concludes my overview of these items. I'll be happy to stand by should you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Wine. Council, do we have any questions or comments? Hearing none, we will move on to motions. And our first motion is to schedule a public hearing on November 19th, 2025, for the resolution authorizing the city manager to execute a boundary line agreement by and between the City of Chesapeake, Virginia and the City of Suffolk, Virginia. And a motion would be in order to that effect. Councilmember Williams.
Move for approval.
Got a motion for approval, Councilmember Williams. Councilmember Johnson.
Second.
Second from Councilmember Johnson. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a joint work session of City Council on the Suffolk Public School Board for Wednesday, December 3rd, 2025, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled by the mayor and the interim city manager, and a motion would be in order. Councilmember Bennett. Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Bennett. And I believe Councilmember Williams. Second from Councilmember Williams. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Our next motion is a motion to schedule a City Council work session for Wednesday, November 19th, 2025, at 4:00 p.m., unless canceled by the mayor and the interim city manager. Councilmember Rector.
Motion to approve.
Got a motion for approval from Councilmember Rector. Councilmember Williams. Second from Councilmember Williams. Do we have any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, councilmembers prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
The motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Okay, we'll now move on to non-agenda speakers. Madam Clerk, do we have any non-agenda speakers? And if so, please explain the guidelines.
We do have non-agenda speakers this evening. Each person participating under the item of business entitled "Non-Agenda Speaker" shall limit their remarks to the services, policies, and affairs of city government, and shall be permitted five minutes for the purpose of presenting their matter. Speakers appearing before City Council will not be permitted to participate in the following activities: to campaign for public office, engage in personal attacks, promote private business ventures, or use profanity. Speakers who violate these rules will be declared out of order by the presiding officer and will immediately yield the floor and be seated. Our first speaker is Arthur Elliott, 219 Prospect Road. Is Mr. Elliott present? Our next speaker is Roy Johnson, 1877 White Marsh Road, representing self regarding speed limit on White Marsh Road and a suggested location for the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. statue.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, all council. I'm Roy Johnson, 1877 White Marsh Road, here for two quick reasons tonight. I like to get an update and stop hearing things about the Martin Luther King statue. I'm hearing that it's supposed to be over here in the Peanut Park area. Then I'm hearing that it's been scratched off the list. And if you are thinking about scratching off, let's recap back a little bit and find somewhere else to put it before we decide to just throw it in the trash can. First of all, we doing this little job up there at the Phoenix Bank. Looks good, it's coming up, looks really good down in the fairground area. Now, I'm thinking about, this is me, I'm a citizen too, why don't we just put that statue right there beside the Phoenix Bank since it's all history and put both of them right there together? I'm also a member of Metropolitan Baptist Church, and we just spent thousands of dollars on our parking lot. So why not we take in consideration and doing the Phoenix Bank, that little parking lot right beside that belongs to the city, let's think about putting the statue there with a nice, pretty, brand-new parking lot from that church right there beside it. It would draw a beautiful scene coming off that railroad track and going down off the road end. My second thing while I got my five minutes is that going back to the speed limit on White Marsh Road. I know you're tired of hearing them because I'm getting tired of running me off the road over there. I got a recall back from Mr. Bennett and from Mr. Williams on the first time in August of 2024, and they sent the police officer down at the fire station. The violators are two miles up the road, coming through at 65, 60, 70 miles an hour with residential area, and the speed is 45. I've gotten, it's gotten to a point now when I could leave home, I run 45 and they'd be behind me with, you know, flashing their lights and... be behind me with, you know, flashing their lights and, you know, the fanger and all of that coming, you know, coming down the road. And I'm trying to get moving, but I want to go at a safe speed. And they are constantly just speeding, speeding, speeding in that, in that area. But if we could tell me something about that Martin Luther King statue, I certainly would be happy and satisfied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson.
Our final speaker this evening is Ann Harris, twenty-four fifty-five Lake Cahoon Road, representing self regarding the city employee step, step plan staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Duman, Vice Mayor Ward, council members. I'm Ann Harris. I live at twenty-four fifty-five Lake Cahoon Road in Suffolk. I just have a brief observation to ask about this evening. Basically, I'm just asking why there was no report this evening about the city employee step plan. I watched the city council meeting on October first, and kind of hard to forget the lengthy discussion about the motion that was made requesting a review of the step plan to be done for tonight's meeting. Suffolk News Herald even covered that discussion, and the article ended by stating that it was now expected for a report to be back here on November fifth with findings and recommendations. And during that meeting in October, it didn't seem like there was any concern by the city manager or any issues with doing the report, so I'm curious as to why it was not on the agenda this evening. Hopefully, since the motion last month was made here publicly and the results of the employee compensation plan would be also shared publicly in the near future. So I know this may seem a little nitpicky, but people are paying attention, and details and process and consistency do matter. Thank you.
That concludes the speakers, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Clerk. I will now move to new business. Madam Clerk, do we have any additions to tonight's agenda?
Yes, Mayor Duman, we have two additions to this evening's agenda. The first is a nomination to the Economic Development Authority, representing the sleepy hole borough, Carly Bosco, and the second is the Suffolk Clean Community Commission, and the nominee is Michael Davis.
Counsel, a motion would be in order. Counsel member Johnson.
Move to approve.
Got a motion for approval from counsel member Johnson. Counsel member Wright.
Second.
Second from counsel member Wright. Is there any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
Are there any other new business items for consideration that require the action of city council? Hearing none, we'll move to announcements and comments, and at this time, I'll ask if the communications department has any announcements.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, Mr. City Manager. We'll start tonight with a quick reminder that the city of Suffolk will observe the Veterans Day holiday on Tuesday, November eleventh. City offices will be closed, and normal operations will resume on Wednesday, November twelfth at eight thirty A M. There will be a one-day delay in trash and recycling collection, but Suffolk Transit will run on its regular schedule. The Economic Development Team is excited to share that Harbor Freight is officially open in Suffolk. The new store opened October twenty-fifth and offers more than seventy-five hundred tools and products, so you're sure to find the right tool for any project. They're open seven days a week, Monday through Saturday from eight A M. to eight P M., and Sunday from nine A M. to six P M. For details, visit harborfreight.com. A big congratulations to our purchasing department on reaching a major milestone. They've been recognized by GovDeals for achieving five million dollars in sales. GovDeals helps the city sell surplus equipment and seize property online, maximizing the return on items that might otherwise go unused. Great job to our purchasing team. On October twenty-fourth, members of the Suffolk Police Department attended the Greater Hampton Roads Regional Crime Lines Top Cop Awards Ceremony right here in Suffolk. Retired detective and master police officer Joyce Williams received the Lifetime Achievement Award for forty years of service, and Detective T. Jameson earned both the Top Cop Award for Suffolk as well as the overall regional Top Cop Award. Congratulations to both for their dedication and excellence. We're also recognizing Deborah Owen, Community Learning Manager for the Suffolk Public Library. He was named one of Inside Business's twenty twenty-five Top Forty Under Forty. This award highlights her leadership and commitment to expanding access to learning and creativity. Deborah's passion for connecting people and inspiring lifelong learning continues to make a lasting impact across our community. Get ready for some creativity, Suffolk. Suffolk Parks and Recreation and the Suffolk Art Gallery are teaming up for the brand-new Suffolk Sketches Drawing Derby on November twenty-second and twenty-third in downtown. Forty artists will create original works on-site with live music and a community drawing project led by artist Andy Harris. Artwork will be available for purchase with proceeds supporting both the artists and Four Kids, a nonprofit fighting homelessness. Admission is free, just bring your creativity and consider a food donation for the Four Kids pantry. Join us, join us at Downtown Festival Park this weekend as we honor all who have served our country. The Salute to Service Five K will be held on Saturday, November eighth, in beautiful downtown Suffolk. The Five K Run and Race Walk start at eight A M., followed by the One Mile at approximately nine fifteen A M. The course takes participants through a fast, mostly fat, mostly flat route, starting downtown and looping through the scenic Riverview neighborhood. All registered runners will receive a T-shirt, and every finisher will take home a medal. After the race, enjoy hospitality and refreshments on-site, including an after-party with a live band, snacks, and cold beverages. The Hampton Roads Sanitation District will conduct smoke testing in sections of Suffolk sanitary sewer system from November seventeenth through November twenty-first, along the one hundred to six hundred blocks of Constance Road and nearby streets. Residents will receive advance notice before testing begins. The smoke used is non-toxic and harmless and helps identify leaks or defects in the system. If weather causes delays, testing will resume the week of December first. In a quick traffic update, Route Fifty-Eight West will have overnight closures from November seventh through November ninth for improvement work. Closures will take place Friday and Saturday nights from ten P M. to seven A M., and Sunday night from ten P M. to five A M. Please follow posted detours and plan ahead. For updates, visit vdot.virginia.gov/spsaimprovements. And finally, a big accomplishment from our Public Works Department, the completion of the Pewsville Drainage Project. This major effort improved stormwater flow and reduced flooding, protecting homes and strengthening infrastructure in the Pewsville community. It's another strong example of our commitment to building a safer, more resilient Suffolk.
The Pewsville Area Drainage Project was designed to improve stormwater management and reduce flooding in the Pewsville community. Drainage from the area flows through culverts under Town Point Road, then travels through a series of ditches into the city of Chesapeake. At the east end of John Street, the water enters box culverts beneath Interstate Six Sixty-four before ultimately discharging into the Elizabeth River. To manage this flow more effectively, the city of Suffolk installed new drainage infrastructure to reduce flooding and improve neighborhood access during heavy rain events. Project features included the installation of a closed-pipe drainage system along John Street and the construction of a new stormwater management facility, a wet pond located between Queen Street and Armstrong Avenue. The project also added a combination of eleven-drop inlets and culvert pipes to carry water from roadside ditches into the underground system. The new wet pond helps regulate stormwater by temporarily holding runoff and slowly releasing it into the drainage system. This reduces the volume of water entering Chesapeake during heavy rainfall, helping to prevent flooding and easing pressure on the system. These improvements have reduced flooding during storm events, lowered water levels in neighborhood ditches, and improved roadway access and safety for residents. For more information about this project and all Public Works projects, please visit the city website at sufficva.us.
That concludes this evening's updates. Before we close, take a look at your screen for all the ways you can stay connected and informed about everything happening in Suffolk. Thank you and have a good night.
Thank you, Mr. Franklin. I will now move on to announcements from council, and we're going to start with counsel member Wright. Get you turned on here. Bam.
Good evening. I want to take this opportunity to wish all of the veterans who have served, I want to thank you for your service, and I hope that you enjoy Veterans Day and all of the benefits that come with that on Monday. I also want to take this opportunity to thank the staff for a phenomenal information session in the driver community. The staff came out in numbers, and we had a very meaningful conversation with the members of the community. I want to thank the community for coming out also on a rainy day. The participation was great. And I also would like to thank Driver Troop sixteen Boy Scouts, who surprised us and came out and led us in the Pledge of Allegiance. That's actually all that I have. With that, I'll say good night.
Okay. Counsel member Rector.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I'm going to be equally brief. The only thing I want to touch on is I did attend the Hampton Roads Regional Crime Line Top Cop Awards where two of our finest were recognized, Joyce Williams is for her career work in law enforcement, and then also Detective Tamar Jameson being named the region top cop. And then the only other thing I'd like to say is that, as we all know, yesterday was Election Day. The bonus today is that we get to stop hearing ads on the TV and the radio almost constantly. Whether you went to bed last night excited that your candidate had won or disappointed that your candidate did not perform as you had hoped, the beauty of our country is that we fight hard up until Election Day. We make our opinion known by casting our ballots, and then today, when it's all over, we come back together and recognize that we're all in it for the same purpose, which is to make the city of Suffolk, the Commonwealth of Virginia, and the United States of America the best place on the planet to live. And with that, I'll say good night.
Counsel member Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. City Manager, if you would, in chief, can we get some, some police officers to patrol the eighteen-hundred block of White Marsh Road to the city line, or the state line, really? Mr. Johnson, thank you for coming up. We've, we've talked about this several times, and if we can get more police presence out there, that would be greatly appreciated. As it relates to the M L K statue at Peanut Park, as far as I know and we know, it's still going to be at the park, so I don't, I don't know where. There's, there's no changes as, to my knowledge, anything has been changed. So I just wanted, just to let you know that. And with that, I'll say good night.
Counsel member Butler Borlow.
Thank you, Mayor. And the theme is brief, right? I just want to, you know, because I always do, remind everybody that the fall harvest is still in full swing. We're always moving big equipment around, and just have a little patience. It's, it's getting farther along, and hopefully in a couple of weeks, I'll be able to report that it's mostly finished. But in the meantime, everybody that's involved in harvest, please stay safe, and if you're not involved, enjoy the view of all the cool stuff that is driving around the city. I want to close with just a comment that I, a little piece that I read today. A hundred and fifty-three years ago today, Susan B. Anthony was arrested for voting in a national election. Today, we celebrate the voting in of Virginia's first-ever woman governor. I'm thankful for the courage and determination of the women and men in the United States that have allowed this change, and hope that our next milestone is not a hundred and fifty years away. Good night.
Counsel member Bennett.
Yes. Back to Mr. Johnson, a comment about the speeding. I know, chief, we, we did do a study out there some time back, and I don't remember how long it's been, but it was Shelton when I wrote, I just remember how many tickets. But it was police presence, it has been out there in the area, but it might need to be increased again, put him back out there again. But I know it was, presence were put out there, and there was some action taken on it. So we listen to you, we hear you, and let Mr. Shelton be the one to get you now when it comes through. So, but we want to go out there and see if we can slow him down because it's speeding everywhere, not only on White Marsh Road. Any road you go on, just about you find him speeding, so. All right, the other thing is, as has been mentioned, the election was yesterday, and I congratulate all the ones that got elected and the ones that had the opportunity to run and didn't get elected. But I think that some people were sad and some was happy. But it's all over, and I got to agree with counsel member Rector. I'm so glad that advertisement and commercials on television, I can look at television again because I just turned it off because I got tired of looking at them. But maybe they made a lot of money with the commercials, so that's a way to make money. And with that, I'll give my other minute to counsel member Johnson.
Counsel member Johnson.
It looks like we're having a voting theme tonight. I'm going to keep it going here for just one more minute. Every opportunity we get to vote is a reflection of who we are as Americans, and I would like to see it not stop at the end of the voting day. Our citizens need to reflect upon the fact that you are responsible for helping us run this city. And the only way we can run this city in an appropriate fashion is to have you interject when you need to interject. So I'm asking you, and everybody up here might yell at me, but I don't care. I, I want you guys to participate. When something comes forward that we don't agree with, let us know. Can we always change it? No. Sometimes you might even be wrong. Sometimes we might be wrong, but let us know. We've, we've all been, it's been a busy time in this city because there's so many things coming up, and we don't always have to agree with it. But we can only do what we think is right to do when we know how the citizens feel. So let this voting day be the day that we all participate. Everybody come out and do what's right for your city, for your state, for your country, and for your fellow citizens. And with that, I'll say thank you.
Vice Mayor Ward.
Yes, I'd like to thank Mr. Johnson for coming up. He very much involved with a lot of things going on in the city, and he asked me, and I told him, let's come up, and I'm glad to see him here and responding to some that he think that as council, we can be a part of helping him going on. But I don't, I didn't, I didn't hear what he heard about the Martin Luther King statue, so I don't know. Is that true, Kevin? That's not true. Yeah, so I didn't hear that, but that's not true. That's not true. I want to also thank the city, city managers, the mayor, everybody about the Pewsville Drainage Project. It's been long coming, a long while. Been on council like fourteen years, and I know they've been complaining even before then, so I think the people of Pewsville is happy, I'm happy, the city happy, and the people can rejoice that we did. It took a while, but it happened, and I thank the city for that. I want to just pat myself also, the candidates. Congratulations to the candidate that won, and the ones that lost, thanks for being involved. But the candidates that won, I want to share that when you run for election, it takes a lot out. It's not an easy job. It's not easy to win, but when you do win, you go like this, phew, it is hard. It's, it's not easy. And for the people to come out and vote, thanks for coming out and vote and making the decision they did. I want to just say something. I'm here because of that. Nineteen ninety-five, they had the Million Man March. That's one of the biggest events, one of the best events of my life I went to. All, all the men from all over, some parts of the country came. I've been in business in nineteen ninety-five, it was October nineteen ninety-five. That march put something on my heart to start some, make a difference in the, in the community, the city, the community, especially Afro-American community. Didn't know too much about that, have seen papers all around. In New York, I seen a paper, it was a night paper, but at October nineteen ninety-five, I saw the newspaper, November nineteen ninety-five, thirty years ago. God put it on my heart to try to make a difference. I started out with four pages, four pages. Don't write a sentence, but the fact is, God put people in my path that knew how to write, know photographers, and all that happened. I've been in business, my little media, thirty years, and I thank God for allowing me to do my publication. Many of you, and I haven't seen it, but one thing about it, that newspaper have put me on the map all over, all over. I met people that I never would have thought I would have met. And to this night, right now, I had one newspaper, four pages. I had a newspaper, I had two newspapers, three magazines, TV show, and radio show. I used to have Suffolk Happened News TV show that came to us for sixteen years on charter cable because of that one big event.
because of that one big event. And I'm so proud of that event because other organizations, even around this Hampton Road, started men that was caring about their community. So with 30 years of media, I'm so proud of my success that I have, the people I have met that changed my life, and I thank God for that. And I'm keeping on, keeping on and doing what I do because I like doing that media. I got a new media, I got a new one coming out called Senior Living for the Elders. When you can, pick it up. At, at my time, I don't have to have a degree on that because I'm 71 years old, and I can tell you some stories of getting old. So I don't have no problem with that. But like I said, 30 years ago, I'm still out here, and that's God. Thank you so much, and God bless.
Okay, I'll go and wrap it up. It has been, I called just about, spoke to a couple council members. It is kind of unusual when you have that fifth Wednesday in there. It seems like it's forever since we've actually gotten together and spoke. And I just want to talk about a, a few places where I did go, not so much that I was there, but just to recognize the organizations that are playing a vital role in our community, you know, one way or the other, in, in serving. One was the Suffolk Interdenominational Ministerial Alliance. It has taken me about six years to be able to spit that out without stuttering. They had a, their Second Annual Ministers' Banquet, which recognized their youth, and they had about 50 youth there that they did recognize as, you know, a very well-attended event at the Hilton Garden. The Geneva Shelter had their major fundraiser for the year, which was very successful. And I appreciate everything that they do, helping in our community in regards to individuals, women, that are battered and abused and need a place to go to. They serve a huge function in our city, providing that service. The Suffolk Foundation, I want to thank them for what they've done. And I particularly want to mention, they had two new grants scholarships, if you will, and one of them is near and dear to my heart, which is one that we established for Sergeant A.J. Parker, who was born and raised in Suffolk, left Suffolk, went in the Army, spent 22 years in the Army, retired as an E8, came to work for me at the dealership for years, served on the Suffolk Redevelopment and Housing Authority, who overcame a lot on his own. Unfortunately, his older son was involved in a gun violence act here in Suffolk, and, you know, which was, yeah, rather, I don't know, it's hard to, I can't really describe what that's like. I mean, he wasn't my son, but I got that phone call that night. But A.J. became part of a group that they put together, along with Joan Turner, to have individuals that have experienced that type of violence in their families together to where they could talk. And I want to thank Carl and Denise Ferris, who are good friends of mine, who really stepped up to establish that scholarship so he will be remembered in perpetuity because that is an ongoing scholarship. Harbor Freight, I know that was very much anticipated. I don't know how many phone calls I got over the last three to six months. Where's Harbor Freight? Where's Harbor Freight? I thought Harbor Freight was coming. You know, I heard the city was homeless, I've had permitting problem. But it's done, you know, it's, it's a pretty cool place. I hadn't been to one except for the one on Jefferson Avenue about 10, 15 years ago. So I think it's a great addition to our city. I had the pleasure to tour our homeless shelter the other day, which is not quite complete, but it's looking pretty good. And I think we're still on schedule to have some service out of that in December in time for the cold weather. And that will be another very, very welcome addition to our city. It's one of those things that, that over the years, I've had the most difficulty dealing with, and that is getting a phone call about a homeless person, and where do they go? So now we have another asset that we can use to address that situation. Mudstrut, we got a lot going on. That was a great event. I regret that I was not able to attend the Top Cop Award this year due to a prior family commitment. Basically, it was my birthday and my, so we already have a big thing planned. So Danny, I love policemen and everything, but, you know, birthday was, and I got a nice little cupcake and a candle, and it was really cool. But I'm thinking about you guys all the time and women. My congratulations to Ms. Williams and also Detective Jamison for their well-deserved recognition. The Vice Mayor alluded to the Pewsville Drainage Project. That has been a long time coming. In Pewsville and drainage, I mean, drainage has always been an issue in Pewsville. Pewsville was built with drainage problems, and it has been ongoing over the years. And we've finally been able to complete a major project to address that. So I want to thank staff and everyone who was involved in getting that put together. I want to congratulate all our constitutional officers were reelected for them. I want to thank the other individuals that participated. And I'm looking forward to work with those individuals to continue what we've been doing, which is to serve the citizens of Suffolk together. And what else we got? I think I'm about done. I think that's it. So we're going to get out of here almost before 7 o'clock. So without any further ado, I'm going to go to my quote of the night, and that kind of alludes to what Councilmember Johnson said. And I didn't even know what he was going to say. And this is from Louis Brandi, I think is how you pronounce it. And that quote is, "The most important office, and the one which all of us can and should fill, is that of private citizen." So with that, I will ask for an emotion to adjourn.
Councilmember Wright?
Motion to adjourn.
Got a motion to adjourn from Councilmember Wright. Councilmember Williams?
Second.
Second from Councilmember Williams. Is there any discussion in the motion? If not, council members prepare to vote. Please cast your vote. Madam Clerk, please record the vote.
Motion is approved by a vote of eight to zero.
This meeting stands adjourned.